Joining us today for invocation is Father Huffman from Saint Joseph, Saint Lawrence O'Toole, and Saint Mary's Churches. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
It's good to be with you. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, we ask you to bless our coming together as council with our mayor. You're the source of all truth, all authority, all knowledge. We thank you for sharing that truth with us when we truly search for it. For sharing that authority with these, the council and the mayor to govern our city. We thank you for giving us the knowledge to know you, to love you, to serve you. One thing you always tell us in the scriptures is, "Be not afraid." You've told us over and over again. So we ask this council and mayor always to not be afraid to do what is right and what is good for our people. We ask you to bless us this evening. Where two or more are gathered in your name, you're there in our midst. Bless us, keep us healthy and safe in these uncertain times and certainly in our world when there are so many difficulties and so much seeking for power that is only belongs to you. We ask you to bless the people of Ukraine, the Russian people, to bless their leaders, that we may pray for their change of mind and for that they will bring peace to their people. We ask your blessings as we come together tonight. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock, call please, Morris.
Cleary.
Here.
Hany.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Next on the agenda, we have the purple minutes from the regular council meeting of February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and the finance committee meeting of February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Craig?
Just one thing. In our regular council meeting minutes, Martha, page six, under communications. I said that besides Chris inviting them to be here for our legislative session, they also represent us as county residents. And I just wanted to add to the point that it's just, I mean, they're our representatives that we elect to represent us, not only at our own legislative body but in other legislative bodies around the county. Thought that was important.
Any other edits, additions, or omissions? Those amended minutes will be approved. Next, we have audience participation. If we have any audience members that would like to come up, please state your name, your address, and you will have five minutes to address council. Mayor, do you have any questions? Sheriff's log?
Couple things. First, I want to ask for a PUC meeting to be called to discuss some legislation prohibiting flushable wipes, rags, paper towels, personal hygienic toiletries from being disposed into our public sanitary sewers. If we don't do something about it, we're going to go broke fixing sewer pumps. I know we've talked about this before, but it needs to get addressed. So if we could get a PUC meeting to discuss that. Then I want to ask for a strategic planning meeting to discuss some downtown parking solutions that are alternatives to the one being presented to you tonight that I anticipate is not going to go through. We submitted two applications for the WSR LA, which is the Water Department of EPA. This round, one was replacing the water lines, the service water lines on Tenth Street from Hepler to Ashedabula, which is one of our biggest problems. In addition to our Third Street Water Line Project, which is the other larger water issue problem, or water line problem that we have. So let's hope that that gets through. I spoke at the Counseling Center that's out of Scioto County. They've offered to come and present, they did a market study that, on the treatment centers that are offered in all throughout southeast Ohio, and just wanted to provide some data if that's something that you guys would be interested in either in a committee meeting or a regular council meeting. If so, just let me know. I'll provide the contact info and figure out what you guys want to do. And I'm not sure how many of you, I know some of you do follow the Ohio Municipal League letters. We were in Columbus today, actually, with them. And there's quite a few bills in the House and the Senate that are being proposed that are going to further restrict our ability to collect income taxes and other things that the city relies on to fund itself. So I'll actually send that all to you because it's more than just one thing. Just be watching your emails to kind of get an idea of the goal is to reach out to our legislators and like let them know, hey, for a municipal government, not, you know, unlike the townships which don't have that income tax, this, you know, this could kill us in the coming years. So I'm going to put that information out. I'll kind of provide some contact info for the right people to get in touch with. And I just appreciate your guys' help with that.
Was there any proposals to give municipalities, any sales tax proportions?
No, that's an alternative that, I was glad to hear that they're talking about that as an alternative if they're going to continue to further restrict our income tax. As you know, I don't, income tax doesn't really, I mean, it's crucial to us, but it wouldn't be as crucial as, you know, say, getting sales tax like the county or the state do. You guys got any questions?
PUC meeting, and it was only purpose for it to discuss?
Public health emergency.
Public health emergency.
I mean, we're spending eight thousand, ten thousand dollars covering a week or so ripping these wipes and personal hygienic toiletries.
The bad thing about it is they're labeled flushable wipes, you know? We've talked about it before.
Well, they're biodegradable, but they're not biodegradable by the time they hit a sewer pump.
Is, and we, is there any influence, information we can send out to get that out there?
I think we can put ordinance together stating that it's illegal to flush them. So whenever we have a clogged sewer off of your tap, we know where it came from. It really just, they need to go. I mean, I have plenty of evidence of it to where we're channel locks trying to rip those things out of the pumps, and it's just not even budging.
Any council members that we've talked to, Dennis Geller, about this, he calls them, he calls them rags.
They're rags, paper towels, adult diapers, and we find everything in there. So people are putting everything with their children down the toilet.
Chris, are we going to assign a date for this PUC?
That's what I was going to get with my layers on that. Get everybody's, get everyone on board.
All right.
Nate?
I have a question not related to that. Did you have any luck reaching out to zoning company consultants?
Yeah, Terry has reached out a couple of times, sent a couple of emails, made a couple phone calls, we saw her back from.
I'd like to, I've contacted some people, I've talked to Brett Thomas a lot, quite a bit about the pickleball tournaments and things like that. I've reached out to some people that are really big into pickleball. I don't know, I'd like to gauge everybody's interest on a Memorial Day weekend tournament.
We have a rec meeting then, too.
Well, that's what I was going to say is, Brett seems to think that there's a couple guys that run nationally that would be interested in.
I know. Yeah, they've told me they would help with tournaments, but they didn't have the capability to do the league.
Right. So we'll have to schedule a rec meeting for that also. Good? Mayor, you good?
Yep.
Onto communications. We do have communication from the subdivision of liquor control, and this is just a transfer from what was basically pick and save to what is now correct. I had one communication, I did, I received a response from one.
Do we, do we have this?
I don't believe we have to do.
With the statement we don't wish to have a hearing, but.
There's a public hearing component.
I'm going to not have a public hearing on the liquor control one.
I'll second that. Also, just need to send it back and check the box that council does not want. Rock, call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
The next thing I wanted to address was, I did receive a response from one Lawrence County Commissioner, it was Mrs. Holiday. She asked what the invitation, what time the council meeting was. I told her the time, and she asked also what the purpose of the meeting was, and I told her it was to address some issues that the citizens of Ironton have and some current, about some of the Lawrence County Commissioners are currently doing. Some of the issues that they've brought up and possibly put on about. I have never received any other response from Lawrence County Commissioners other than that. Moving on to ordinances.
I didn't know that you were going to extract.
Well, we were in audience participation. That's when audience participation you got to come forward, so we've already moved way past that. You can, we can talk to you in this lane, yes.
That'll be fine.
Okay. All right, on the ordinances, we have ordinance twenty-two thirteen, first reading. Martha, would you please give that first reading, please?
Establishing Consumer Price Index increase on an annual basis for all city usage rates, fees, and permit charges, first reading.
Make motion that we suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-two thirteen, second and third reading by title only with possible adoption.
Craig?
Second.
Rock, call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Martha, would you please give ordinance twenty-two thirteen, second and third reading by title only?
Establishing Consumer Price Index increase on an annual basis for all city usage rates, fees, and permit charges, second reading. Establishing Consumer Price Index increase on an annual basis for all city usage rates, fees, and permit charges, third reading.
Any discussion? Craig?
Yeah. I got your note. Even though it would take effect immediately if it was passed for thirty days, the first adjustment for fiscal year twenty-two is July one, and then annually moving forward. Just because we've missed that January period, it's something that I'll just guess if you guys that I was going to throw on there, so if anybody had questions, it's.
Could you, because I know you feel strongly about this, do you want to elaborate on what that actually does and the?
Yeah. It puts, it puts future councils in the position of not having to be reactive because we are being proactive. And I think, I think right now is the perfect climate for everyone to understand inflation and cost of living adjustments and that we as a city have never done that. And this legislation does that on an annual basis, which probably makes sense.
It could also, you like, you.
It could stay the same, it could be zero, it could go down, but most of the time in the near future, it's going up. Our costs don't come down, our costs go up by that same amount.
Mike?
It says in section four commencing on January first, the Consumer Price Index doesn't come out till mid to late January.
Sometimes February, it came out in February this time.
So that might, we might have to take a look at that.
I actually outlined that in the legislation that I sent them in, and I believe, very good, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe the fact that it, that it says something along the lines of effective January first, if it's past that, then it doesn't matter. And when it comes out in February, it's still past January first, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay, just wanted to have that covered.
Because you're not going to be able to pinpoint a date, so.
Right. Another thing, you had mentioned, Craig, on some other legislation that we were discussing, a possible hardship clause, or maybe we can pass a separate ordinance. Those people that are, that can prove hardship, and we would have to delineate that, I understand. But that's something I think we should consider as well. It's not in this legislation, but.
Right, no, it's two separate things. And also, I'm learning more about some, some of the other community programs that are offered. Nate has reached out to me about some of those things, and actually, I'm learning a little bit about that from people in my own family that are on fixed incomes. I had a lot of questions about application processes for heat and other things, so let's come.
Okay. If I can be of any assistance with that, let me know.
Appreciate it.
That's all. Any other discussion? Nate?
Yeah, a couple of things on that. You know, what I'd like to see is, just overall for this, that it takes care of, we're not having to come back and revisit increases and increases and increases. But I don't, for me, it's firm, it makes it firm that, you know, we're going to live by the budget that we're given based on these revenues year to year, you know? No matter what it is. You know what I'm trying to say? Like, this is their budget, this is what we're going to have to live within. You know what I'm trying to say? That's, that's, that's my compromise on it, because nobody likes an increase, you know? But incremental, over time, and living by our budget, you know, I think, I think they play hand in hand. The second part is kind of what Mike was saying, and I've talked, I've said, you know, I've asked Craig, I said, I want to talk about it a little bit more as far as maybe how to help those that may be struggling with, you know, keeping up with it. And I, one of the, you know, I think there are a lot of good programs out there, and especially with a lot of COVID stuff, too, that's still available for people that may be struggling with their utility bills. And I get it, I understand. So I'm hoping, you know, people will kind of reach out and use those services. The model that I was kind of thinking, if we were going to take on something to help families, would be something similar to what the county uses with the homestead reduction for property tax. And that is, and that's on the auditor's website. It's somebody that's disabled or sixty-five plus, and it has the income on there. I think it's thirty-four thousand right now, but it changes each year. So it's already kind of spelled out as far as the qualifications for that, that they may get some sort of a credit or something reduced to help with that burden. That's kind of what I was thinking on it. Instead of having, trying to have our water clerks be like accountants and, you know, and, you know, that's what I'm trying, you know? So if somebody may show proof of homestead reduction already through the county, that would be the easiest for them, if they're a property owner. So those are just some things that I thought about as far as being able to help, help, help those that may be in need. Like I said, it's not reinventing the wheel, it's using what's already out there.
Mayor, just have a question. There was an ordinance that adopted the water rates for the ten-year period based off the asset management plan. Does that, does this affect that?
No, there's a, in one of the sections, it says anything that's not.
Seven and a half would be a lot more, I think, than what that was.
It excludes anything that's already been adjusted.
Any other discussion? Well, my closing thoughts on this is I've been against any raises. I don't think you guys on council noted that I haven't voted on any increase. But this is one that makes sense to me. Like Craig said, it not only, you know, it solves the problem, it's not, it's not putting a Band-Aid on it that has been done in the past, and this actually solves the problem and keeps up with it, so it's not a kick in the gut once every four or five years of an increase of five to ten dollars on things. So I think this makes sense. And, you know, Craig, I appreciate your passion for this because you're the one that introduced me to it on my, the first legislation I passed was the saltwater cell. And he said, let's put that on there. You and Nate both were saying, put that on there, just, it's already on there, you know, you don't have to mess with it anymore. So now, you know, coming full circle, so this is, makes sense to me. So I appreciate your work on this. Bob?
Make a motion we adopt ordinance twenty-two thirteen.
This is Craig.
I'll second.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Craig. Martha, rock, call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two thirteen is adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-two oh seven. Martha, would you please give that third reading?
To adopt a permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
A little bit of discussion. We've, we've tried to pass this for about a month, it seems like now, so I think we're finally out here. Bob? Discussion. Discussion.
Yeah. One thing I want to mention here is that when we start on that, like, like you said, Chris, while I'm going to get this thing done, I think we've got to be aware that even though it won't pass this tonight, I presume we are, that with the economy is and the way gas prices is, I've talked to John about it, and, you know, he would project out how much fuel cost is going to be for the city. And he, he projected out that about fifteen percent increase for fuel every year, about what goes up. But when we done the, start on the budget, it was two eighty-nine is what the price of gas was. And the fifteen percent took the three sixty-two a gallon. And that's what John, which I think is good, that we showed that on this budget, as long as gas stays three sixty-two or under, we're going to be on, right on budget. But as everybody knows, today's price is four seventeen, of course, Ironton, I think it's four oh nine. But I would lay money by the, within next few weeks, we'll probably be at five dollars a gallon. And when you look at that, instead of being fifteen percent, it's going to be a thirty percent increase. Hopefully, things change, I'm wrong, but it's something that, you know, will probably sooner than later have, have a budget amendment so that we can, you know, account for the increased fuel costs across city. So that's, that's everything from police cars, guards, trucks, to everything that has an engine in it that runs, so.
I agree. Now, I did hear something about a gas tax holiday, I don't know if that's going to happen, but John, does that affect our budget for our street?
Yes. You want to answer this one?
Oh, no, not that part.
Senate Bill two seventy-seven is in legislature right now, and it is going to reduce the gas tax if it passes. That could be a shot in the foot for municipalities.
This is one of the things I was talking about.
So, so the holiday, I've not heard about the holiday. It might be a testing of the waters, but I, I know that they're wanting to do away with, and I believe it's for five years.
They're going to put a freeze on it for now, as far as I understand.
I heard it was going to be immediate for a short term. I didn't hear anything about long term. I just heard that there was going to be a gas tax.
Till they unfreeze it.
And, well, I, I thought that I had read five years on that. I spoke to our representatives field office, and they're the ones who told me that it was in the House, Senate Bill two seventy-seven. And thank Mr. Cleary for bringing that up initially, because when he first mentioned that, I was like, I've not heard anything about that. So that kind of lit a fire under me to go ahead and start researching it. Don't know how they're going to vote on it. But as Mr. Cleary said, with gas maybe knocking on the five dollar door, I think that there's a likelihood that it may be reduced temporarily, frozen.
Another question, I know this is kind of, it's still, our trucks, the new fleet that we got, were those flex fuel or did we not go, did we not go with the flex fuel?
I don't think they're flex fuel.
Okay, I know we had discussions about getting flex fuel, but there wasn't enough.
They were.
They were higher.
And they were six-cylinder. I think that was the efficiency trade-off model for a six-cylinder four-wheel-drive truck.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got, I'm just sitting here, wheels turning. If gas goes to five dollars a gallon, we're going to be short on the budget. But if the fuel tax drops, does that mean that we'll still be getting about the same amount of fuel tax?
I'd say we'd be.
Because it would be based on five dollars instead of two eighty-nine?
I, I think it's going to be, as I understood it, eliminated.
Yeah, that's.
So there would be, any place that you see gas tax in the budget?
Right.
Cross that line out.
And that, is that federal or state?
State.
Okay, because I think what I've seen today was they were talking about. Okay, because I think, I've seen today, when they were talking about, uh, cut the federal tax, that wouldn't affect us at all.
That wouldn't affect us unless there's a pass-through that comes from federal to state. But, uh, where, where it would most dramatically affect us is the reduction of the state.
Yeah, I think federal's at eighteen cents a gallon or something.
Wow.
So, I mean, that's for federal, we're talking about cutting out.
Okay. Jacob?
I just want to make mention that this ordinance, uh, twenty-two oh seven was favorably recommended by finance in the finance committee meeting on February tenth. And I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty-two oh seven.
Motion by Jacob, seconded by Bob. Roll call please, Martha.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two oh seven has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-two oh eight, would you please give that third reading, Martha?
An ordinance amending ordinance twenty-two zero one and declaring an emergency third reading.
The only discussion that I've got, I believe, partly from right, that this is pertaining to like the food trucks, bar food, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt twenty-two oh eight.
Craig?
I'll say it.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Craig. Roll call please, Martha.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two oh eight has been adopted. On to ordinance twenty-two ten, would you give that third reading, Martha?
An ordinance authorizing proposal J S two one zero three zero one, amendment one to the AVM facility support services bundled energy solutions project agreement number eight seven three zero three seven five, through federal acquisition regulation number five five two point two eight three dash one one four, use of federal supply schedule contracts by non-federal entities, May two thousand nineteen, and declaring an emergency third reading.
Uh, make a motion, we adopt ordinance twenty-two ten.
I'll say it.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Chris. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
No.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
No.
Well, one of the things.
Four yes, three no.
Four yes, three no? Yeah. Ordinance twenty-two ten is adopted.
Question?
Question.
Doesn't that have a resolution with it?
Yeah.
Resolution doesn't fail, perfect, then, it's voted on either.
It was on the first week.
It didn't get tabled, they all adopted, like a motion.
Right, I know, yeah. So you'll need to put it on for next week.
Do they ever work or do you need to cancel?
No, it doesn't have to be done something, final thing.
Don't have to be done prior?
Mayor, you don't think it does? I don't think so, I think you can pass it. So would you strike, strike that out? No, no. The, the resolution and ordinance are completely separate.
Okay.
They're dealing with the same issue, but they're, they're, they, they pass completely separate, so.
I'll sponsor it for the next agenda.
If the resolution fails, does that initial fail too?
It, it won't be funded.
It won't be funded.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It also needs to be on finance, they just have one hour. Have resolution on there.
It already, it was already financed it.
It was not favorable. And that probably needs to go to the minutes too.
Just make mention that that ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-two ten.
Was given unfavorable recommendation by finance.
Those are arguments. Okay, order resolutions.
Order, please.
What is it?
Point of order. I have the last agenda, and I document my stuff on here, what happens, or at least try to. And I have resolution twenty-two eleven failed on the, at the last meeting, that's what I wrote down.
No, it didn't fail, it didn't get voted on, it didn't have the.
We didn't have it, there weren't enough people, we didn't have enough.
No, there were, that was a second read. The thing about it is, is it didn't have enough, it didn't have enough to pass as an emergency to want to even vote on it. But it also did not, I mean, we didn't even act on it.
It couldn't vote on it because it didn't have favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
Right, now the resolution, the resolution.
That's, that's what I was talking about.
Failed, the resolution failed because nobody.
We'll make another one, because this is twenty-two twelve.
Failed for lack of action.
That was told, as Max said, you didn't have enough finance committee to pass or fail it, so.
Same thing's happened the last two years.
Yeah, yes. So it couldn't be voted on.
You got it, John?
Uh, yes, I need to go back and read a little bit more.
On to resolution number twenty-two twelve, Martha, would you please give that reading?
Resolution authorizing the approval of the contract for services agreement with the Ironton Lawrence County area community, community action organization, Inc., C A O.
Bob?
I'd like to, a motion that we pass resolution twenty-two twelve.
Can I, we have some discussion quickly in county.
Second.
Craig?
I'll say it.
Second by Craig?
Yeah.
All right, a little bit of discussion, um, and this is in regards to the contracted services for.
Grant writing.
Grant writing and community block grant and things like that, correct? Anybody want to elaborate on that before we say, everybody knows what we're.
They, they discussed it in finance, but, um, John, John, I don't want to misquote you, said that we see a substantial return, is that it? Is that the word you? He said, we see a substantial return on our investment for, uh, paid thirty-five thousand dollars a year for grant writing, and I quantify that to, um, in twenty-one being greater than eighteen million dollars. So, um, that's what we get as a return on our investment in, in fiscal year twenty-one. Um, I, every year when that comes up, just for curiosity's sake, I always ask Ralph at Cindy Anderson to send me numbers, um, you know, what are we involved in and how much? And, um, so I got, many of you all want to know, I'd be happy to share that with you, but I think that Ralph sent it to Morton, just me, I believe, he sent it to the mayor, and, um, I don't know, I don't know who all he had. So you may have it in your email, if you don't, I'll, I'll be happy to forward it to you. But the, the substantial return was greater than eighteen million dollars in twenty-one.
All right, thank you for clarification and elaboration, but Craig, we have a motion by Bob, and a second by Craig.
Chris.
Nate?
We're gonna abstain from this vote.
Abstain, all right, let's go ahead and stay. Uh, roll call please, Martha.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two twelve passes. On to miscellaneous, I know we have one of the speaking councils, sorry about that.
That's all right.
I didn't see anybody come up, so I just, I just referred to the mayor for his, his portion of it.
That's all right. My name is Mike Finley.
Mike Finley.
I'm running for county commission, and I'd like to work with the city of Ironton, because it's twenty percent of our county. And right now, we don't have a really good cohesive working relationship with the way things are done now. And everybody can win if they just work together. And, uh, I'm here to tell you that if I get elected, I will become, when you call me.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Any questions for him? Ralph?
Appreciate the, the vote, thanks. I probably should have said something a little bit earlier and things, but I'm here. We don't necessarily come to council a lot of times and things, but we're always here if you have questions. Did want to, um, kind of inform you, we've added a couple of staff people, which are, I think, want to help us a lot. We've been able to secure Michelle Throck Morton, who used to work for, we already see, many of you probably know her, she's got lots of years of experience in grants writing and grants administration and things, so, so luckily, we have been able to secure her. Um, I don't know, have you also heard, uh, most of you probably knew Dave Mylum, uh, he passed away in his services for this past week. Dave was critical when putting together like the splash park and a lot of these community projects and things, so we're gonna sort of miss him. Um, but we have, uh, in turn hired a Jason Purcell, um, who comes with quite a bit of experience in construction management and things, so uh, Dave's got big shoes to fill, but hopefully, we can also help in that matters and things too. But anyhow, we're here, anytime you have questions, uh, Craig, I, I sent it, I think, to the mayor, I didn't know, but got around to everybody. Feel free to, you know, share information, if you have any questions. Um, projects, they go multi-years sometimes, so, but, uh, there's a lot of things, I think, good in the works right now, that we can work with.
I do, actually. Um, with regards to the Brunnberg building.
Yes.
I know we talked about expansion of parking, uh, when, when do you expect that we need to make a move of the city? When do we need to get something together?
We're working with, um, private developer to develop out the, um, condominiums upstairs and things. Um, we did ask him to kind of take a look at a plan, I know, um, we were looking, we're gonna dedicate some of the spots on the, um, Park Avenue that kind of has joint property ownership and things, um, and do some reorganization of that, which we share like dumpsters and things. I don't have a solid plan at this point in time and a solid date, but it's something that we will need to work with. Um, I did ask, um, the contractor about what type of cost and things like that that we're looking at. Now, one of the things, and I think it was mentioned, we are, one of our focuses were right now, um, we're applying for O D N R, um, I forget which one it's, there's two or three different program, trails, monies. Um, we applied for it, we didn't get it last year, but it was for the reorganization and doing the whole Vernon Street. Uh, that application goes in on the fifteenth of April, I believe, so we might be able to coordinate and do some things, the whole street through there with that.
That, with, in the time sense, it'll probably be on the next council agenda, right?
Correct, yeah, right, uh, we're working, we've, we've had a lot of meetings, which, by the way, we have a really good working relationship with your engineering firm. We consult a lot, um, but anyhow, we're gonna try to have that to present to, for this, those applications and things for that project for the next council meeting, that, and then, uh, we're also looking at maybe another potential trails from Gateway, the hotels out to, um, where the future development is out on, uh, across by Storm's Creek Apartments there, so.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay, you got my number, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to call a finance committee meeting for five forty-five on March twenty-fourth.
Five forty-five?
Correct.
Is that the only thing that needs to be discussed, or you won't be able to do that in fifteen months?
Uh, it's gonna be the, uh.
The parking made a resolution?
Yeah, and then I guess if the, the other resolution, if needed, I guess that was left off.
That's the parking made a resolution.
And the O D N R.
Fifteen months good for that?
Yes. I got parent teacher conference that night, so I'm gonna be right at five forty-five, yeah.
Chris?
While we're in miscellaneous, I had a couple of things, um, received a letter from Jay Zorn's, um, inquiring street repairs. He, uh, his big old Cadillac or whatever it is that he drives, um, hit and busted a tire and a rim on one side and an entire rim on the other. Um, I had these questions a lot, um, reimbursement to residents, uh, is that a question to Sam?
They have to file it through Purcell, right, state that handles our insurance?
Yeah.
So you can file that claim in finance.
Well, so, hell, we can provide a claim, he will fill it out, we'll fax it in, and then the claims adjuster works with the claim filer.
Okay.
So our, our role is to fax it to the right person, make sure it gets in.
Okay, I'll get a copy of that letter to everybody on council, to Sam's office also. Um, with the success of the pickleball, uh, I've had a small handful of people asking if Ironton would be interested in turning one of the parks into a bocce ball court. Um, I guess there's a big bocce ball movement in Huntington and Provo, so just kind of throwing it out there as something to discuss later.
You said a park or any?
I, no, they just said in Ironton, and in my mind, I thought, you know, the way we kind of co-opt the, at the park, maybe we can co-opt the Eighth Street Park or something, I don't know, but, uh.
Did you say bocce ball?
Bocce ball.
Okay, just want to make sure. Are you good on that?
B O C C, B O C C, yeah. Uh, and then the last thing, um, I was at, uh, Ironton and Bloom last night, um, with Mr. Klein, and, um, I know last year was an exceptionally wet summer, so we had a tough time getting floodwalls mowed and maintained. Uh, I live on that strange part of Sixth Street that goes against the grain, um, so there's the, the flood wall that's there. And I know people that live up and down the Third Street floodwalls, were also experiencing some of the same pains, and, uh, one of the, the ideas I had to maintaining it, beautifying it, and maybe an overall cost reduction is to seed at least the front side of the floodwalls with, uh, wildflowers. Um, I'm not an expert on that kind of thing.
Okay, the corps manages what we can and cannot have on them, and a lot of things, what they won't allow because of the structural integrity of it has to maintain, um, because even whatever type of herb side, whatever things, we have to keep vegetation actually off of it.
Yeah, um, well, the, the one that's directly across from my house, um, ended up being a potential health and safety issue. There were probably forty-five snakes that were coming out of the creek, over the wall, and into people's yards. So I guess at some point, maybe we would need to have a discussion with the state's army corps to determine what a resolution is for us, um, if, if vegetation, if the, if the, the, um, root system of the grass is what's helping to maintain the, the integrity of that wall. Again, I'm not a, a, a botanist, but, uh, maybe wildflowers or something else can help maintain the, the, the structural integrity of floodwalls and, uh, cut costs down from sending the mower and the fuel and the time and everything else, so, it, it, again, it's something for a discussion for a later time, but just know that that problem was pretty persistent for us there on Sixth Street.
Yeah, I, I mean, I talked about that also, it was a wet summer, I think, uh, it's a steep time. So hopefully, hopefully, we have good weather this year. We don't have that problem. You good? Tyler?
I'll be quick. Um, the mayor may have mentioned, uh, calling a strategic plan in the committee meeting for parking solutions. Um, I've been kind of talking with Craig, wanted to see your availability, but we were thinking, uh, Wednesday, uh, March sixteen at six fifteen. I know that seems weird, Mike, six fifteen, but, um, I coach baseball, and it ends at six, so. I can swipe the fifteen.
I will be there too.
Yeah.
I've got, uh, I've got some.
I've got, uh, I've got some possible solutions.
And, and I think that it's important we call that meeting both.
Before we've got to have that, before we have a resolution.
That resolution will be on there.
And that is for, what date, what did you say, at six fifteen?
Sixteen, at six fifteen.
Six fifteen. Mike, or Bob?
I just wanted to mention that we need to have an executive session, so, I mean, there's still more conversation, it's fine. But we need to have five minutes executive session, we'll set the clock so we don't go over the five minutes.
Sorry, it's that.
It's, it's about pending lawsuits, and I'd also like to put on there a second thing of, uh, property acquisition.
I have a short thing. Uh, followed up with, uh, Rosetta Russell, who was before council at the last meeting.
Roberts.
And, uh, Rosetta Roberts.
Rosetta Roberts.
Yeah, and, uh, thank you. And, um, she actually has two problems. One is, I want to hear her house, overhanging trees that, in my opinion, are on the state. And then the other is water runoff, uh, which is probably an issue that's been for fifty years, in my estimation, from the sixties when they built the highway. And, um, I recommend to the mayor that someone speak to, uh, O Dot about the tree trimming. And, uh, if, if they can't comply, then maybe we can, on her behalf, talk to the High Attorney General or State Highway Department. Um, it is an issue, it's a danger, it's, in my opinion, it's a matter of time before a tree falls.
Or, and she's already said it's possibly causing damage to the foundation of the ground.
It was there Friday, and the trees are our property, so we're gonna have to cut them. I've already addressed it, actually, with.
Uh, she has two on her property.
That, that's not her property, actually, that's the alley. She has cars parked there, but it's not her property.
Oh, really? Yeah.
It's an alleyway that's vacated. That has two trees in there, and then the ones in the fence line are ours too.
The other issue is water, and hopefully when the roundabout goes in, there can be some resolution to help with that. Um, she's in predicament there, I, no easy solution for what she has. But I wanted to let council know that I did follow up.
We'll throw on that. Make sure that you guys take the time to, to go check your streets out. Nate?
I'm sorry, there's a couple of things I'd like to discuss in executive session also. I'm sorry, Bob.
Any motivation?
Five more minutes.
I can hear them.
Um, com- uh, property contracts, any personnel?
No action to follow?
No action to follow.
Here you go, leave.
Could, could I start with, for me, could I have Ralph Klein and John, the mayor, and Brigham? And just, just for right now, for Ralph Klein, and just start first, if that's okay?
We see the mayor of finance, sure.
Okay. Everybody good? Is this miscellaneous or?
No.
Um, well, hang on a second. Now, one thing I wanted to, to talk about with street repairs. Now, I've been, I've been YouTube-ing street repairs, so, is how I fix stuff, around my house, I YouTube it. So, we, what has been done in, in other municipalities is, once they put a cold patch on, is they throw, it's, uh, basically, it looks like a, some type of restaurant cut full of sand over top of the cold patch. And that keeps it from sticking to the car tires, the car's tires, and from us having to replace it. Is that, do, I know we don't have our, our street department here, but is, do, I mean, I will sponsor a budget amendment to put sand in their trucks when they do this.
The cold patches are asphalt.
It's cold patching, it bugs.
Yeah, 'cause the cold patch kinda gets ripped up pretty quickly.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, their solution is, is once they.
Well, the water is what kinda pushes that out.
But that's, well, when you run over it immediately, and you can feel your tires taking it up, so, I, I don't, I don't think we'd have to have an extraordinary amount of sand, but if we have to amend a budget for the street department, I'd be willing to sponsor that, uh, to throw sand on their trucks, like a bucket of sand, so where, once they get done, they can throw the sand on the pot or the cold patch. We don't need a budget amendment for that. Can we, can we get a bucket of sand to put on those trucks?
I'll talk to him first and see, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Craig? Second.
You do. That's what I'm saying, I'll fix lots.
Who made the motion for a chairman?
No.
Or executive session, no, I can say it. We've got a motion by Bob, and a second by Craig for executive session with no action to follow. Roll call please, Mark.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Hawk?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Pierce?
Hawk.
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight's meeting. Uh, we're now going into executive session first, to his, or we can start with Ralph first, yeah.
Yeah.